Let's just go ahead on it. Good evening, friends and neighbors, I hope, and welcome to another session of the State and City Council. It is Monday, the 19th of August in the year 2019. Let's have a flag salute. I'm gonna try to stand up for it. But not easily. Ah, here we go. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good. Indivisible. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. Under announcements, additions to the agenda, are there any? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias, et cetera?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. And regarding the annexation application, I will be abstaining tonight for a potential conflict of interest as the lot is across the street from my house. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? And everyone's here that needs to be. Before we go any further, I want to express my incredible regret at Counselor Brian Quigley having to resign, not for anything that has to do with anything tonight, but felt the need to step down. I, as much as anyone, maybe more than most, will miss him on this council. But we will express our regrets and for John. So, here we go. Introduction of interim police chief and interim deputy police chief, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have made an appointment of two individuals to an interim police chief and a deputy interim police chief. I do want to go ahead and introduce each of them. I will read a brief bio and give them a chance to talk. So, we'll start with the interim police chief, Ty Hanlon. Ty has over 24 years of police experience. He has spent almost 15 years as a police officer in Beaverton where he served as a canine handler, detective, firearms instructor, and tactical negotiation team member. Mr. Hanlon has spent almost 10 years with the city of Sherwood, the last seven as the captain. Mr. Hanlon has a Bachelor's of Applied Science in Business Administration and Management, and has a Master's of Business Administration from Corbin University. So, at this point, Mr. Hanlon, I'll let you speak.
Thank you. That's all incorrect. Good evening, council and members of the public. As he stated, my name's Ty Hanlon, and I just wanted to address the time that I'm gonna be here. As the title notes, I'm in the interim. And why I'm here, my purpose is to just continue the stability and not only that, the good work that the police department is doing. They continue to provide excellent service for you guys, and that's what I'm gonna be here to do, is to support that and to ensure that the patrol officers have what they need. And if issues arise, I can help to address them. Obviously, I'm gonna be accessible to the public as well. And to my left, Mr. Friesendahl, who will speak here in a moment. And as well, as we move forward, there are no... I'm not in here to rock the boat by any means. I'm here just to simply bring that stability, as I stated. And if there are changes that need to be made, that it will be made involving value that is created, not only internally and externally, it's not just gonna be random things that are thrown out there, but they're gonna be purposely thought out to ensure that they do have a purpose and they do create value for the service that we're gonna provide you. So, I thank you for the opportunity, and in the interim, we will be searching for a new chief in which I'll be a part of as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
So, we've also appointed interim deputy police chief David Friesendahl, who has over 28 years of police experience. He has spent almost four years as a police officer in Oak Ridge. He spent 25 years with the city of Tigard, where he served as a field training officer, a detective, a defensive tactics instructor, force-on-force instructor, and motor officer. While in the city of Tigard, he spent four years as a sergeant and five years as lieutenant before he retired. He has an associate's degree in criminal justice from Chomeka College, and since retirement, he has continued his involvement with law enforcement by teaching survival skills at DPSST. He has lived locally in the area for nearly 10 years. So, David.
Do you mind? We have people behind you. Mind if I go up real quick, just so I can see everybody? Well, safety behind me, I'll be able to address everybody. So, Mayor, councilors, thank you for having me here today. I've had the great opportunity this weekend to meet a lot of the members of the police department, spend time with them. Rest assured, we have a very good police department. They're out servicing calls for service. That service, our goal is not to have that drop whatsoever. And again, to keep running, I can't speak, to what the chief said, say that I'm very glad. My, I will be here most of the time. I don't know anybody here in Stateon, really. I've lived in the area for about 10 years. For me, it's sort of a new hometown. So, I'm very privileged and request to help with the community and the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Okay. I guess we'll go on, jump into this. Did we decide last time to cut that public speaking time down to two minutes?
No.
No?
Nice try.
Nice try. Okay. No, that was... That's bad on me, I guess. Okay, three minutes, there's four of them, and then two, I think, for the public hearing. Samantha and Nora, would you guys like to wait until the public hearing on 10:19? Don't have to, but you can.
Sure, sure.
Okay. All right. Carrie Sessoms. Twist that mic up toward your lovely face. Yeah.
Carrie Sessoms, 1501 East Burnett, and I'm also the owner-operator of the Covered Bridge Cafe. Not everybody's favorite on the council, obviously. Hank, very nice to see you tonight. I'm glad that you're here. So, I just wanna voice my opinion on the happenings within the city. Not that it's gonna change anything, but for the record, I am just shocked and appalled that two police careers were ended. That's two more to the list, and all of you had a great hand in that. I can't fathom what is happening within the city. I can appreciate that change is good. I'm all about a change agent, but I just feel like there's just havoc being wreaked. Now, we have other officers who are concerned for their jobs and their police careers. I don't understand what is happening. I was hoping that, since we accepted Keith as being our new city administrator, that you guys would be part of the solution and not continue to be part of the problem. So, I think that's the general consensus in our community as far as what is happening within our city government. I would be glad to hear anything that you all have to say that would support the decisions that you're making for all of us, and remind you that it isn't all about you. You're here to represent us, and that you have to think about how your decisions will affect our entire community. And the last three or four meetings that I have attended, you are not listening to us. Not one bit. You don't even listen to the people that you paid thousands of dollars to, to support your downtown area. So, you know, my kids in college, I got nothing better to do but to spend some Monday nights down here and hopefully be part of the solution. And I hope that you can accept all of us for who we are and all of the different businesses that we run that put money into this community, in the thousands and thousands of dollars, and contribute to being part of the solution for our city and not making it about your personal opinions and agendas. You're supposed to be like Switzerland. That's all I have.
Thank you, Carrie. Centani. I don't know if I got that right. Anyway.
Hello, Chief Ty, and Assistant Chief David. Damien Centani, 866 Sunrise Drive, Stateon, Oregon. Mayor, councilors, staff, thank you for letting me have a couple minutes. I moved here 12 years ago from a bigger city to be in a safer place. All of the departments that make up our nice little town, police department is number one. Safety first. So, Mr. Campbell, if I may please, with respect, our city's management flow chart puts you at the top. I'd like to respectfully ask you the why and the precipitating factors that have led to our previously described top-two police positions resigning. That's it. A few questions.
Okay. Thank you, Damien. James Loftus.
About the answer? What about the answer? You asked a question.
This is not a question-and-answer session. People are free to express their opinion in this time.
Actually, Hank, Mayor, it's public comment. It's not question-and-answer. So, we can comment.
Right. I think I just said that. Thank you, James.
I was just trying to confirm that, sir. James Loftus, Director of JPL Museum, owner of the Gardner House Cafe Bed and Breakfast, former city counselor and current elected official. I have some... I'll put it to you this way. Do you want the good news first or the bad news? Which would you like first? Okay. So, we'll go with the bad news first. The bad news is, is that I've worked with law enforcement since 1981. I just effectuated arrest with Marion County just last week on a DUI suspect. I've known Charlie and the chief since I've been here. The chief was actually a lieutenant. And these are two of the finest officers I've ever had the opportunity to know. And I am extremely disappointed in the decision process... The decision process that was made, and the fact that you did not inform the public. And so, rumor mill after rumor mill after rumor mill was generated. So, those are my concerns. The other concern that I have is that you have now lost your most former senior counselor, the one that has all of the historical background and knowledge, because he was on the council with me. So, you're now a new council. You've now been wiped out of having access to history. This concerns me. Now, for the good news. We got the rocket engine, as I told you, that we were requisitioning from NASA, and went down on the 50th anniversary, and it was presented to us by Jack Boyd. He was one of the founding members of NACA. And NACA was the precursor to NASA. Since then, we were the recipient of one of four grants here in the Willamette Valley from MAPS Credit Union for $2,500. We've also received a grant from Pacific Power for $5,000. And the hospital has committed $2,500. And I understand that you guys have a grant application process coming up. I would hope that the city would try to back what we're doing. We have two programs that we're running. One's a pilot program, but it seems to be taking off, and that is, is that we're broadcasting live into Oregon classrooms. On the way over here, I realized that I had enough money to now include a whole series of middle school students. So, we're gonna do one day a week for high school students. It's the fourth Friday of the month. We're skipping December and July. And it's at 10:00 a.m., and all these students will be able to log in and interact with NASA scientists and Space Center Houston. And now, we're gonna do that for middle school kids. So, that's basically it for me. Thank you very much for taking my concerns into your considerations. You know, there are a lot of red flags going on right now. You have a senile mayor and a new council. So, thank you very much.
What can you say at something like that? May you live shortly, James.
You just let it go.
No, sorry. Okay. Reese. James, no. James.
If you remember, about two council meetings ago, I accused the city manager of official oppression. I just want to put that back on the record.
Okay. Reese Bordeaux. Reese?
Reese Bordeaux, 525 Mill Stream Woods, Stateon, Oregon. Do you want the zip? 97383. 20 years here, 38 years in Portland, 12 years in Klamath Falls. This tops all of it. All of it. I'm not gonna go into police background, but how about if I say my kid's dad retired as a police lieutenant? His father retired as a chief from Sheridan. I don't have any good news. I am going to put on the record, for about the seventh time, that I really, really, as part of the Happy Tales Dog Park fundraising committee that raised $20,000 for a federal matching grant of $20,000, we were told we were no longer a committee after we turned our money over to the city about a year and a half ago. And we have never gotten an accounting for what happened with that money. And we do know there's a fence and a bench and a drinking fountain for dogs, but that's all we know. We were told we didn't need to be involved anymore, and we couldn't know after investing three years and about 20-some volunteers to raise all that money. I want that report. I don't know whether this city council can really do something. I don't need all the receipts, but I would like a written accounting to show that that money was used. I don't believe it was all used. I don't think anybody could. And we would like to know where the rest is. And finish, signage on the highway. The high school was going to build us the marquee with the name, and also, all the people that did in-kind donations of dinners and other things were never included on the sign. Only the people that gave between $50,000 and $3,000. That's that one. Thank you. Secondarily, I have watched It's a Wonderful Life for years, but that was a dream and a movie. We're not in Kansas. We're in a nightmare, and I'm starting to wonder when Stateon is gonna be renamed Campbellville. I voted for most of you. I firmly believe with everything in me since the last three and a half years, as I've watched about seven good employees. The first, a man who turned in his resignation because he wouldn't allow himself to be fired after years of working for the city. And then, a librarian who had 17 years' experience when she came on, but wanted some say in her profession. And the list goes on, until the dominoes are now... I think with two... These two officers were up to about nine longtime employees with great records, and they're gone. And the replacements end up being, I hope, and some are integritas, but you haven't been here to see the others fall. And if you question that man, you'll fall too.
Reese, thank you. Okay. All right. Then, did I get an affirmative from Nora and Samantha about waiting till the public hearing on 10:19? Okay. All right. So, that's it for... That's it for public comments tonight. So, we're gonna go on with the business of the commi... Well...
Bring him up.
Did you... You guys were sitting back there when I said, "Get those up here if you were honored to speak."
Thank you.
Hi. That's why I said that earlier.
It's okay.
You did? Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, let's go on. Frank, while you're up, go ahead.
I, for the life of me, can't...
Frank, whoa, hang on. Name and address, please.
Name is Frank Hubbard, and I live at 1632 Meadow Ark, over by Roth's.
Go ahead.
I cannot, for the life of me, figure out what all of you people are complaining about. This is the biggest bunch of nonsense I've ever heard. I'm serious. These guys got fired, must have been for a reason. The city can't tell you what the reason is, because they'd be in trouble with the state. This is just nonsense. By the way, I would suggest that you limit people's comments to two minutes.
Thank you, Frank.
Jamie Madison, Stateon, CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, 6611 Cascade Highway, Southeast Sublimity, Oregon, 97385. Couple of questions for you. Our State and Police Department has been extremely supportive to our youth, and having some of our best officers being basically kicked to the curb for all of their years of service is just gut-wrenching. What now happens to our police department? They are the support to the Community Emergency Response Team in the event that we have a disaster. Without them, we do not have a disaster support team for this entire community. Why are the voices of the citizens being ignored? The votes are being voted, and they are all getting no answers. Why are our support basically going down in the garbage and the money going to Keith Campbell and not supporting our police department for their raises? They earn the same right to have the cost of living raises. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Tyreen. Tyreen. Cordish. There we go. Tyreen.
My name is Tyreen Cordish. I live at 476 West First Street, Stateon, Oregon. Couple things. One, in watching the city council meeting last 22nd, body language says a lot, and your body language, quite frankly, sucks. It says you're not listening. It's going in one ear and out the other, especially when you're sitting there like this.
Can I? No. Probably not. No, just let him...
The other thing is, I run the Lost and Found Pets page for Stateon and Sublimity. I'd like to see the city support that. And I don't mean pay for it. I mean community involvement. Chip readers. I understand the police department only has one chip reader. What good does that do? There's no catchpools, as far as I'm understanding, and there's no chip readers. Why can't the police department team with the Lost and Found to help people get their pets back?
Like that? Yeah.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Everyone's had a chance, so we're done with that. And we'll come back and pick up a couple more of them during the public hearing. So, on the business for this evening, the consent agenda. July 1st, city council minutes. July 22nd, special session of the council. And third part, resolution number 994, adapting appropriation adjustments to the fiscal 2019-2020 budget. And I do apologize to the group for replying to a snarky comment with another one. I shouldn't have done that, but sometimes it's really hard to resist. And the old guy might be senile, but he doesn't know it yet, so we don't worry too much about that, I hope. All right. Here we go. Consent agenda. Gentlemen, ladies?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
As presented?
As presented.
Okay. Thank you. Have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as sent out. How's that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Hearing none. Hearing no opposition will declare the motion passed, and the consent agenda adopted. It is public hearing time. Ordinance number 1035, annexation application, Robert and Kate Pendleton, 1660 East Jefferson Street. And I have to read this, so bear with me, please. Good evening. My name's Henry Porter. I'm the mayor of Stateon, and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the city council's public hearing in the matter of land use file number 7-04/19, application for annexation of approximately 1.4 acres of land at 1660 East Jefferson Street to the city limits... Into the city limits, excuse me. The application requests that the property be zoned low-density residential. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be read... Be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. That statement, with all the information required to be presented under the Oregon 法制 statutes 197.763 bracket 5, is printed and available at the back table of the room. If you've not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it... Or objects to it... Geez. This is a tough one tonight. Objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes to your turn to speak during the hearing. Also, at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. The city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case? I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I already stated mine.
Yeah, we've already heard one. Are there any others?
Counselor Patty, since we're on the record for this case, would you please repeat your declaration?
Mr. Mayor, I have to declare a potential conflict of interest as this lot is across the street from my house, and I will be abstaining tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We're now ready for the staff introduction.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute.
I looked up the property on Google Maps. Just wanted to be aware of that.
All right. That's fine. I think... Have we got it all? The staff summary.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The issue before you this evening is a public hearing on an application for annexation of approximately 1.4 acres of land at 1660 East Jefferson Street, and the application requests that the city assign low-density residential zoning to the property. Following the public hearing, the council will be requested to consider ordinance 1035, which, if enacted, would annex the property and adopt a new official zoning map. This application had been scheduled for a public hearing at the July 15th meeting, which was canceled, and was rescheduled for the August 5th council meeting, which was also canceled. You have in your packet an August 7th letter from the applicant indicating that they are not likely to be able to attend this evening's meeting. The council's rules for land use public hearings indicates that if the applicant is not present, that the hearing will not be held and will be rescheduled. Because this hearing has already been rescheduled twice, the applicant is requesting that you continue to... You hold the hearing in their absence. They were previously scheduled to be out of town this evening. So, the council rules for holding land use public hearings do allow the council to waive those rules. So, your first order of business needs to be a motion and a vote to... those rules, so your first order of business needs to be a motion and a vote to continue with the public hearing or not.
What would you folks like to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
At the request of the applicant, I would like to move to waive the rules of having the applicant present during the hearing, and go forward with the hearing.
Okay, all right. A motion to waive rules requiring that applicant be present and move on with the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, three affirmative, one abstaining, motion passes, we'll go on with the hearing. Go ahead.
Okay, so, that's essentially my introduction, we don't have the applicant's presentation, so I'll move on to the staff report. So, you've got the application before you, that application consists of the application form, the applicant's narrative, you also have my staff report, which lays out some information which is required for the record. The land use code contains six criteria for approval of an application for annexation. The sixth criterion applies only to contract annexations and is not applicable to this application. The other five criteria are that need exists in the community for the land to propose to be annexed, the site is or is capable of being served by adequate public, city public services, the proposed annexation is property contiguous to the existing city limits, the proposed annexation is compatible with the character of the surrounding area, and complies with the city's urban growth program and policies, and fifthly, that the annexation complies or can be made to comply with all applicable provisions of state and local law. Three of those criteria are objective and provide little room for interpretation. In this case, sewer and water facilities are available in East Jefferson Street, this application was filed because the existing house on the property had their septic system fail, and they were not able to install a replacement septic system. In allowing the house to be connected to city sewer, the staff required that the property, the Pendletons file a declaration of non-monstrance for future annexation, they did that, and the sewer connection proceeded, and they immediately filed this application for annexation. And the property is contiguous to the city limits on two sides. Currently, the city limits is the south right-of-way line of East Jefferson Street, and also the back property line of the city for all of those homes that are on East Virginia So that leaves two of the criteria, really, for your scrutiny and analysis, and your determination of whether they are met or not. The need for land and the compatibility. The applicants indicate that they have no plans for future development of the property, the property is a 1.4 acre parcel, it's got an existing single-family house, it is in a neighborhood of single-family homes. Our comprehensive plan includes a buildable lands inventory. That was developed in 2011 or 2012. At that time, there were 114 vacant lots in the city comprising 106 acres of land, zoned residential. The projected population of the city in our comprehensive plan for 2030, which was 20 years in advance of the time that it was written, is 11,350 or so people, which would require almost an additional 1,300 dwelling units to accompany those new residents. The comprehensive plan notes that we are expected to need an additional 320 acres of residential land to be annexed into the city, and since that time, the city has annexed 40 acres of residential land. According to staff's analysis, there are currently 86 vacant lots, zoned for residence in the city limits, totaling about 100 acres of land. In the past five years, we have had only two subdivisions platted within the city. Four subdivisions have been platted in the past 10 years. My staff report you've got in front of you shows the recent subdivisions in the city, how many total lots there were, how many vacant lots there are today. Though there are 86 parcels totaling 100 acres in the city and residentially zoned, staff estimates that there are only 76 parcels totaling 61 acres of vacant property within the city that is residentially zoned and reasonably available for development. The other 11, or yes, 11 parcels that total about 39 acres of land are not included because of lack of utility availability, ownership by a governmental entity, the existence of wetlands and floodplain issues, and other things like that, that just mean they are not likely to be developed at pretty much any time, even though they are in the city and zoned residential. We have 61 lots reasonably available for development in the low-density zone, and 14 vacant lots in the medium-density zone, and only one parcel of land zoned high-density residential in the city limits. The city has grown at an average annual growth rate of about 1% since 2000. The Marion County's coordinated growth projection of 11,360 reflected a 1.6% average annual growth rate. If we apply that 1.6% annual average growth rate to the most recent estimate of the city's population, there would be the need for 540 new dwelling units over the next 10 years. If we have an average of five units per acre for single-family development, we would need all of the existing vacant land in the city, plus an additional 40 acres of land to be annexed into the city to accommodate the projected growth. So that's information I present to you regarding the issue of need. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this application at their May meeting, no, June meeting. There was no testimony from the public, other than from the applicant. They have recommended that the City Council approve the annexation and apply low-density zoning. As I mentioned in my introduction, the ordinance that is presented to you doesn't just amend the zoning map to include this property as low-density residential, but actually enacts a new official zoning map. The reason for that is every time the map is amended, there is a note added to the map that says, "On such and such a date, by this ordinance, the map was amended to do this." We have run out of room on the map to add those notes, so it's time to adopt a new 2019 map, and that's what the Ordinance 1035 does for you. Staff report presents a number of options to you to consider after you take public testimony at the hearing, and I will go through those following the public testimony in my staff summary.
Okay, thank you, Dan, appreciate that. Persons in favor of this annexation? Anyone? Persons in favor? I see little or no movement out there. Persons opposed? Persons opposed? Other interested persons? Okay, nothing there. F, other interested, there's no rebuttal from a proponent. I guess, Dan, for you, a summary, it says close of hearing. Do you want to do that after I close the hearing?
No, I think you should wait until after the summary and decide whether, the council needs to decide whether to close the hearing.
Okay, then.
Which would close the record.
All right, let's do that summary, then, please.
Right. So, you've got a draft ordinance in front of you that would, if enacted, annex the property and assign it low-density residential zoning, and as I mentioned, adopt a new zoning map. You've got, staff report presents to you six different options at this time. First is to approve the application, and the first consideration of Ordinance 1035, as presented. Secondly, approve the application, approve the first consideration of the ordinance with some modifications. To deny the application, to continue the hearing until your next meeting, which is scheduled for September 16th. You could close the public hearing, but keep the record open for submission of written testimony, or you could close the hearing and the record, but continue your deliberations until your next meeting. Staff recommends the first option, which is to approve the application and the first consideration of Ordinance 1035.
Thank you, Dan. You folks ready to close the hearing and go on to deliberation? I don't need a motion for that, do I? Okay, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay. Hearing's closed, council deliberation on Ordinance 1035, an annexation application. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Dan, I, so one of the criteria is that the city services must be available, but do, does the applicant have to, so they're already on the city sewer, but do they have to move on to city water? I noticed in their letter, they said they were on a well, so at what point, or do they have to move on to the, oh my gosh, water? Geez, please.
Neither the land use code nor the city's utility codes requires them to connect to water. If they choose to, now that they, assuming they get annexed, now that they're in the city, they may connect to water, but there is no requirement to, so they are free to stay on the well until such time as they choose to connect.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I feel very comfortable with this application, I think, for me, that this has been drawn out for these applicants for quite a while now, and it sounds like it's something that they want to move forward, and the staff report was very well-prepared, and I don't see any issues with this annexation.
Okay. Other deliberations, comments? Would someone like to offer a motion, then, to what to do on Ordinance 1035, please? Somebody.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the application of Robert and Kate Pendleton, land use file number 7-04/19, for annexation, assign low-density residential zoning to the property, and adopt a new official zoning map by enacting Ordinance Number 1035 as presented.
Okay, thank you. And that's the number one option. Is there a second? There is a second, so I have a motion and a second to approve that first consideration of 1035. Any other comments, thoughts? Alyssa, would you poll the council on this one, please? You can vote on this.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Abstain.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Oart?
Yes.
Motion passes, 3 to 0, 1 abstained.
A 3 to 1 and 1?
A 3 to 0, and Counselor Patty abstain.
3 to 0, 1 abstention, thank you. Okay, Alyssa, we're done with that one. All right. So, here we go, on Ordinance Number 1036, implementing the recommendations.
Point of order.
Mr. Mayor, you need to read the closing statement.
The closing statement.
Thank you.
The closing statement is on the back of the speech I made earlier. "The council's action may be appealed within 21 days of the mailing of the notice of decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals under ORS 197.805 to 855." Okay? Got that. Well, this'll come up again this evening, so be ready to jump on me for not reading it, okay? Here we go, Ordinance Number 1036, implementing the recommendations of the Ordinance 1019 Review Committee. And we will have a couple of people testify on this one in a little bit. Okay, let's see. Commencement of hearing, an opening statement, and we have to do this again. I wish more than anyone that there was a way to shorten this up, but there isn't, so here we go. Good evening, my name's Hank Porter, I'm the mayor of the city of Stateon, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of proposed Ordinance Number 1036. This ordinance, if enacted, would amend the city code regarding smoking on public sidewalks and requirements for maintenance of non-residential buildings. The purpose of this evening's hearing is to provide an opportunity for the council to hear from those who support or oppose the provisions in the ordinance. The hearing is now open, this is not a land use hearing, so the hearing will be conducted in accordance with general hearing procedures of the City Council's rules. The hearing will begin with a staff report, I'll then ask the public to provide testimony. Everyone who participates is asked to start their presentation by introducing themselves by name, giving any affiliation and their address. Participants are requested to limit their comments to three minutes, and are further requested to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed your thoughts, it's perfectly all right to simply state agreement with the statements of the previous speaker. If there are documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the council, they must include the submitter's name and address, and must be signed, dated, and formally placed into the record of the hearing. To do that, either before or after you speak, please leave the material with the deputy city recorder at the staff table. The recorder will make sure your documents are included in the record. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided of this hearing. I don't hear any. To the jurisdiction of the City Council to hear and consider this issue? Again, I don't hear anything. If there are any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any member of the council? I hear none. And now we're ready for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. The issue before you is a public hearing on Ordinance 1036, which if enacted, would amend the municipal code relative to smoking on public sidewalks and the maintenance requirements for non-residential properties. The code changes in the draft ordinance were proposed by the Ordinance 1019 Review Committee appointed by the City Council last November, and they were, and these recommendations were presented to the council, I believe, at an early April council meeting, mid-April, as I look at my staff report. In March of 2018, the organization revitalized downtown Stateon, presented the City Council with a set of code amendments to address the conditions of property primarily in the downtown area. Council indicated its willingness to consider these amendments, requested staff to convert them into the proper form and format of an ordinance, and Ordinance 1019 was presented to the City Council in mid-April 2018, and after some amendments, was enacted in early June of 2018. Ordinance 1019 amended two chapters in the existing code and enacted a new chapter in Title 15 of the municipal code. Section 1 of the ordinance requires people to pick up their pet waste, except on their own property. Section 2 of the ordinance prohibits smoking or vaping outside the front street facade of any building in the downtown area. Section 3 of the ordinance established standards for the maintenance of non-residential properties. Those standards- Those standards require property be kept free from debris, trash, and other materials, that weeds be removed from the front of buildings, and that awnings be kept in good repair, free of moss, and illuminate the sidewalk beneath them. Shortly after the ordinance was enacted, the council received comments about the smoking restrictions. The council suspended enforcement of the ordinance in September of 2018, but upon receiving additional comments, the city council held a hearing on November 5th of 2018 regarding the provisions of the ordinance. Following that hearing, the council voted to establish a committee and charge the committee with recommending modifications and suggestions to the council. The committee was made up of representations from downtown property owners, downtown business owners, employees of downtown businesses, representatives from Revitalized Downtown Stateon, and two alternate members. The committee was chaired by former councillor Quigley. They met on three occasions, and was assisted in their deliberations by myself and former police chief Stevens. The committee reviewed all portions of ordinance 1019 and made a number of recommendations that were transmitted to the council in April. At that time, staff suggested that there be a public outreach campaign and including a public hearing before the council enacted any of those changes. I provided information to... I can't say all, but a very high majority of the businesses in the downtown area about the hearing, as well as a number of businesses out on First Ave. And also, there was publicity provided about it by the Chamber of Commerce to their members, or at least their email distribution list. So, the committee made a number of recommendations that have been incorporated into draft ordinance 1036. Section 1 deals with the smoking restrictions. As I said, currently, the code prohibits smoking or vaping outside the front street facade of a building in the downtown area. The committee's recommendation is to prohibit smoking and vaping on public sidewalks within 20 feet of the doorway of a business citywide. State law today throughout the state of Oregon prohibits smoking within 10 feet of the doorway, an openable window, or any air ventilation facility, air conditioner, intake screen, or whatever, of any business. The 10-foot restriction... The 10... This is just one block. But the 10-foot restriction in state law is illustrated in this diagram for Third Avenue, the block between Ida and Florence. And you can see that there are a couple of small gaps. But in general, state law essentially prohibits smoking on the sidewalk in this block. The committee's recommendation is to expand the 10-foot restriction that's currently in state law to 20 feet, which would avoid those small gaps where there are doorways that are more than 20 feet apart on Third Avenue. Secondly, Sections 2 and 3 of the ordinance modify Chapter 1512 so that the property maintenance restrictions on non-residential property would apply citywide, not just in the downtown core. Section 4 of the ordinance modifies the requirements for landscape beds and planters to be less subjective. Section 5 of the ordinance modifies the requirements for awning maintenance to be a bit more specific and to require removal of the frame if an awning is removed from the building. And it also repeals the requirement that awnings in the downtown area provide illumination of the sidewalk in front of the building. Section 6 replaces the awning illumination requirement with a requirement that all buildings along North Third Avenue, between Water Street and Burnett Street, provide illumination visible from the exterior of the building and provides a number of options for achieving this requirement and standards for the brightness and coloring. So, again, the smoking requirements currently prohibit it outside the front of a building in the downtown area. The proposal is prohibit it within 20 feet of a doorway of any business establishment on the public sidewalk. And also prohibits placement of ashtrays or butt containers within 20 feet of the doorway of a business establishment on the public sidewalk. I have done an analysis of all of the buildings that are zoned for commercial or industrial use in the city. There are four buildings in the city outside of the downtown area that have a doorway within 20 feet of a sidewalk that would also be impacted. But only four buildings that have their doorway within 20 feet.
Okay. What else?
Awning requirements. The code currently says awnings shall be in good repair and free of moss or algae. The proposed language is that awnings shall not be torn, frayed, ripped, faded, or stained, soiled, or dirty. And also, as I mentioned earlier, if an awning cover is removed, the frame and any supports shall be removed. And there is a... Replacing the requirement that an awning illuminate the street, there is a requirement that all buildings on Third Avenue have some illumination at night. It is... The way the ordinance is drafted, the illumination needs to be provided between dusk and 11:00 p.m. There are four choices provided. Either in an awning or canopy, such as this illustration. Exterior lighting fixtures.
Not much there, is there?
Dan, can you go back one? Sure. So, the first choice is illumination in an awning or canopy. I think this is the only... Of the four examples I'm going to give, this is the only real-life Stateon example. All the rest are images I copied off of the web someplace. So, you won't find this store here on Third Ave. But exterior lighting fixtures is the second choice. The third choice is lighting around the frame of the window. And the fourth choice is lighting inside the store that is visible from outside. So, just leaving a light on in the window or in the building, as long as it's visible from outside. The code also specifies that the lighting needs to be white lighting that has a temperature rating of 5,000 or less. So, this is just an illustration. If you... Particularly if you buy an LED bulb, and I think most compact fluorescent bulbs give what's called the temperature rating, and it's a measure of, as you can see here, how either yellow or blue the white light is, because white is just a combination of all the colors of the spectrum. So, the committee felt that... The committee's recommendation was to set a temperature rating of 5,000 K or less. And to require that the light be at least 1,000 lumens, which is the equivalent of about a 70-watt incandescent bulb or a 15-watt CFL or a 9-watt LED light. Did I get that right, Alan?
Sounds good in the air.
Okay. And again, here's just another example of that color spectrum of how to translate that. So, that's what I've got for my staff report. I think we can get the lights back on. And open it up to public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Persons in favor? And either Nora or Samantha, either... Would either one of you like to speak on that side of it? Ah, Samantha. Okay. Samantha Jones. There we go.
Good evening, council. I'm Samantha Jones, 255 North Third Street. I work at Mick and Mom's Pub and Eatery. We have been dealing with this no-smoking thing for a very long time now. Let me tell you a little bit about our part of it, okay? Mick and Mom's is in a unique situation where we don't have a parking lot. As soon as you walk out our front door, as soon as you walk out our back door, we have no place to put a smoking area. Now, I have talked with Keith and with Dan. Finally, we came up with a solution, but he is going to have to purchase a trailer, and we are going to have to park it in a city parking space. That's... It's an expensive thing to do, okay? But, you know, we were told that the smoking ban was complaint-driven, and we willingly asked all of our customers to smoke out the back so that it wasn't in the front, because we do understand, you know, small kids and everything with the dance studio there and shoppers. So, we took that upon ourselves to do that, even though we didn't have to. I don't think that taking people's privileges... Because they say smokers don't have rights. I don't think taking their privileges away is a good thing at all. You know, two of my three children are military and have fought for their liberties here in this country. And you can't walk down the street and smoke a cigarette because somebody doesn't like it? Well, that's kind of ridiculous, because it doesn't pose any health or safety. There's been tons of studies done that prove that outside smoking does not endanger anybody else's health. Now, if you just don't like it, you don't like it. I don't like to see this much of somebody's butt crack sticking out the back of their pants. But they're their pants and their butt, you know? I don't like perfume that's so invasive that I can taste it at the back of my throat. But if you want to smell like that, smell like that. I just... I don't agree with taking away people's privileges at all. And Dan, you said that... Last time we were here, that the council said that they would go to lengths to make sure the public was aware. And you say that you've contacted business owners, and I haven't seen or heard anything. Is it just something that's been done over the Internet? Is there mailings that have been done? What's been done?
I'll address that staff summary.
Okay. All right. Well, the reason it was suspended is because the first time, we were told that the public was made aware, when in fact, they were not made aware. Only a select few were made aware. I don't want to see that happen again, because people should have choices. The people that live here should have choices. We're not Eugene, and we're not Silverton. We're Stateon.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Carrie, did you want to speak on this subject again? Or still, or to? Okay. On this side of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Am I opposing it?
Persons in favor?
Yes. That's me. Carrie Sessoms, 1501 East Burnett, Cover Bridge Cafe. Everybody knows who I am. So, I was on the committee that helped kind of break down the ordinances that we had in place. First, Dan, I want to say thank you to you, because Dan did come on his own time, and he kind of helped us. She was there, the girl that just spoke. She was there. And so, when we're in situations like that, it can be very difficult, because we all don't get our needs met. I mean, I thought that the lighting numbers were a little weird, but I can go with that. So, I do want to say that the smoking thing is very touchy, because it does affect her business more so than it would, say, affect my business or my employees. They smoke in the back. So, I just want you all to consider that. Even though I was part of the proposal to make it 20 feet, I don't know about the citywide. Let me just add that. That could get super weird, citywide. And I don't know if our officers really would... I mean, I guess I would want to know about how we would enforce that. Is that an ordinance issue or a police issue? God knows, they don't need anymore to do. And so, I think that that would be something that I would hope that you guys would consider when you think about that, as well as we appreciate the fact that you would accept the options on the lighting. Some of us don't own our buildings. Some of us have very old buildings. It's really hard to, like, wire electricity to put lights out in front of our businesses. So, that's why we came up with solutions that maybe all of us could do on a pinch. Maybe some could afford to do others, or maybe property owners would be willing to light it up if they knew that was part of the ordinance. So, keep that in mind when you compare it to the old proposal, as well as the clarification on keeping the awnings a certain way. My idea of a clean, pretty awning might not be the same as Alyssa's idea. Actually, we'd probably be the same, but maybe Hank's idea. You know? I think that... So, we needed to clarify that so that it was very clear what the expectation was. So, we appreciate you taking a look at that. And I'd like to thank all the people that took the time to be on that committee and give their input that supports all the businesses, as well as the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Nora, did you want to speak at this... On this side of it? Okay. Nora Anderson.
Hi, my name is Nora Anderson in 255 North Third Street. I'm also employed at Mick and Mom's Pub and Eatery. As some of you may know, I was here... I believe it was April? My husband is a Vietnam vet suffering from Agent Orange. I smoke because it helps me relieve my stress. Now, we've been going through this, and now you're saying that at Mick and Mom's, you can't smoke out back, because that is not... That is city property. Am I correct? Is that city property? No, it says all city property. As far as I'm reading, at any city-owned property, park, and facility, any city-owned property is what I'm reading here. Now, I can see we've asked everybody to smoke out back, but you're asking... Some of our customers are in their 80s, and they smoke. And you're asking them, in the wintertime, to go out back, stand in the rain, and smoke. Now, they have their right to smoke. You can't take that away from them. That's being very prejudiced against the business, against the people. I mean, my husband fought for this country, for our freedom. And you can't take that away from people. You have to be able to come up with some sort of understanding and cooperation that would work for everyone. Otherwise, this business that's... Otherwise, this business that's been there for ye has been there, I know ye hasn't been there 70 years, but the business has been there for 70 years, and you will end up closing it down, because when people drink, they like to smoke. And you will be, I mean, all that is, is being prejudiced against that particular business. I realize this all came up mainly because of the dance studio that opened right next door to a pot shop, and right down, and next door to a bar. Well, those people knew where they were moving into before they moved into it. And they should have taken that into consideration. So, we have no problem smoking in the back, but we have to have some kind of understanding where our people will be covered when they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. All right. Anyone else that wants to speak to that on the, on the Persons in Favor side? I see a hand waving around.
Mark Cronquist, 308 East Water Street, State in Oregon, just basically seeking a point of clarification. I live in a, I am a nonsmoker, pretty much a militant nonsmoker, but I live in a residence that is zoned industrial. And I'm not sure, Dan, how many of those are, but are you saying that, and by the reading of it, it says an industrial property bordered on Water Street, which mine is, which mine is, you can't smoke? And I know the woman next door to me, and I believe she's also industrial, and I'm sure there may be a few other weirdos out there, but does that imply a residence as well? And so that, you know, I don't smoke, people don't smoke in my house, but if somebody comes over and smokes, is that illegal?
I don't know. Just have to read. What the proposed code says is smoking or vaping is prohibited on the sidewalk of a public street within 20 feet of the doorway of any business establishment. There's nothing in the proposed code about zoning or industrial or whatever.
I guess there's an answer there. All right. Anyone else? Persons in favor? Okay. Persons opposed? Other interested persons? Go ahead, please.
Russ Stromeyer, 325 West Washington Street. This is just a minor thing, and it was regarding the lumens. Where do you measure the lumens at? Is that up against the light source, or is it 10 feet away, or 20 feet away? I didn't read the ordinance, and I apologize for that. I was just curious.
The ordinance does not specify. It says that the lighting shall be a minimum of 1,000 lumens. Most lighting fixtures are rated, or bulbs, or whatever, as to what they are.
Okay. So, it doesn't, that's what I was curious, if it had to be a certain distance, or just what it was rated at?
What it's rated at.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Russ. Anyone else? Other interested persons? There we go. Come on.
Jamie Madison, 666-11 Cascade Highway, State in Oregon, 973-5. I just wanted to make a comment on...
Okay. She's okay.
If this passes with no receptacles and no containers for the cigarette butts or the trash that's going to come from it, where is all that trash going to go? Is it going to go on the ground 20 feet away? And now, we're going to have a bigger litter problem? The other thing is, how will this be enforced? Our police department is already down in numbers. We just lost two more. We cannot, apparently, we're not able to afford to take care of our police department. So, how will this be enforced if we have no officers to enforce it?
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any more interested persons?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm an interested person, and I'm used to having a questions from the council section. And I don't see that...
That's not in this, is it?
No. So, I'm, I have lots of questions, and I don't really know that I want to close a hearing before I have those questions answered, because then we can't introduce new information.
Let's do that now. Questions from the council. Dan, you okay with that?
Sure.
Good. All right. Thank you. Questions from the council, jump in.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for Dan. I'm wondering why, you had mentioned that not all of the businesses had been contacted, and I'm wondering why you hadn't been able to contact the business, certain businesses, and which businesses those were, kind of like the methodology of contacting, because that was a huge portion of the last time that this was talked about, was outreach.
So, a notice of the public hearing was hand-delivered to all of the businesses in the downtown area that were open at the, I believe, three different times that I went out and distributed it. So, if the door was locked and no one was home after three visits, they did not get the notice. But I know the notice was distributed to at least 80% of the businesses in the downtown area, as well as a number on First Avenue, up to West Washington, or the Washington Street intersection, but was not distributed further north than that. I can't, I can tell you that the Rising Star Music Studio, no one was home during all the times I visited, so they did not get one. Who else? It may be that what the quirk was not open, because she's open only like three days a week during the, during the business week. She's also open weekends, but I'm not. Right, so, and I can't remember who else wasn't there, but I know, I know that I delivered one to Mick and Moms Bar and Grill.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? A follow-up question?
Yeah.
What other outreach was done? And did you document this outreach that you, that you did? A little bit more clarification on that.
The notice was sent to the State and Sublimity Chamber of Commerce, and with a request that they blasted out in their email or social media. And I have a pretty good recollection that I received one, so it's probably still in my inbox someplace. So, and there was notice posted, has been posted on the public hearings page of the city's website.
Someone else? Sam, we're under questions from the council right now.
I'm interested.
I don't know if there'll be another chance to, for general speaking. Let's see how it goes. Anyone else on questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but if someone else wants to go first?
I have a question, and it's probably not a fair question for you, considering you're on your first couple of days, first week.
First day.
First day. So, I guess it's probably not a really fair question, but to the, the question around code enforcement and the officer, the department's ability to manage code, do you have any sense of that on the first day?
So, just a first glance at this, yeah, I got to be transparent in the fact that this, to me, is not a top priority for law enforcement. It's going to be back to the safety and livability issues that I think are important, and that's calls for service, you know, the speeding, the thefts, whatever is going on out there. That's going to be our focus, for us to be necessarily tasked with a tape measure and 20 feet. That's difficult for me, but I understand the purpose behind it. The concern I have more than anything is that with anything, when we start setting boundaries, and I've been doing this for a long time, I understand that people push the limits. So, at 20 feet, they're going to be, they're going to be out there, as I saw the graph, they're going to be, what's the sidewalk, nine, 10 feet? Parking lane's another nine, 10 feet. They're going to be standing, probably on the side of a vehicle, at the driver's side, at the front of a car, smoking, and they're going to be on the streets. Our concern is going to be somebody getting hit. Our resources are going to be drained because of pedestrians now hit out there, because they're out there smoking. Again, just reading it, and you want my knee-jerk reaction to it, that's what it probably is. That's where, that's where I would, I would say, they're going to find a way to smoke. They're going to find a way to push to 20 feet. And it may be become more of a criminal investigation than it does an ordinance investigation because of those, those reasons I just stated, and somebody not intentionally standing in the street, but just smoking, and, and somebody driving not paying attention to what's going on. So, at first glance, that's probably my best answer for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead, counsel.
Okay. Another question for, for you. So, in, in your experience, how is it handled if someone is within 10 feet of a doorway and they're smoking? How is that normally handled? And who handles that?
Again, I'm going to have to be 100% honest with you. Never done it in 25 years. Never enforced a 10-foot rule with that. It would typically, it's a tool, and granted, it's, it can be a valuable tool under the right circumstances, if there are issues that are repetitive and it becomes a serious nuisance, and we can come in and issue code violation citations, just like we can for trespassing. Probably, I haven't read all the ordinance for the city, but somebody's in the park that's been trespassed, I'm assuming that's a city ordinance that we can cite for the, the dog poop issue. We can probably cite appropriately if needed. So, it's all going to be situational, as I see it. It's going to be dependent on, and I don't know, short of the one establishment that I've heard about, I don't know if there's been a lot of complaints. I don't know if this has been something that our agency has been responding to. So, I would have to do some more research to better understand the taxes and the resources that it's taking on, as far as the PD and patrol, and, and our code enforcement officers.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
If, if I may...
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
Try to provide a further answer to that question. If by asking about the 10-feet restriction now, you're referring to the state's 10-foot restriction, that is enforced by the Oregon Health Authority when, when they receive complaints. They are not out looking for violations, but they do respond to complaints when they get them. And I, and I have heard they have responded to businesses here in Stateen.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up?
Go ahead, please.
So, if we enacted a 20-foot, this may be for both of you, Dan and Ty, if we enacted a 20-foot, if the Health Authority is responsible for the first 10 feet, if we do the 20 feet, are we then saying we're now going to be responsible for 0 to 20? Or are we now responsible from the 10 to the 20? Like, where does our, where does Health Authority end, and then Stateen take over?
Good question. Oh, boy.
I would respond to that, that within the first 10 feet, both agencies have jurisdiction.
Okay.
And between 10 and 20 feet, the city has jurisdiction.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, I have a question regarding the awesome 1019 review committee that, first off, I am so impressed by what has come out of that committee. I am a huge fan of committees, because this kind of work gets done, and it's not stuff that we can do in council, because you can't get into the weeds like you guys did. So, thank you for that. But my question is, how did decisions for these recommendations come about? Was there like a majority vote, or did people just kind of write things down? And this may be a question for Carrie Sessoms, or someone else that was on the committee? I don't know if Dan was at all the meetings, or...
It was a majority vote.
A majority vote? Okay.
Sorry, where's, where'd that comment come from?
That response...
In the back room.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine.
That response came from Samantha Jones, who was a member of the committee.
Okay. Yeah.
And there were probably, in the, there was a lot of, at the first meeting, there were several members who came in with written suggestions of either issues that needed to be discussed, or their answers to the issues that needed to be changed. The committee probably took three or four votes during the course of the, of their, their meetings. Most, I would say all of them, there was probably no more than two, maybe three dissenting votes. So, I think it was a 12 or 13, I forget, you know, it's been, it's been seven, eight months since they've met, so I don't remember the exact number, but there were 12 or 13 people around the table, and most of the votes had fewer than, than three people. I would say all of the votes had fewer than three people dissenting.
That's awesome.
Okay.
Maybe I can throw some context into that.
Get to the...
Wait, well, I'm sorry, Alan. Alan, excuse me, we're kind of in a enclosed, closed space.
Reach out to the public...
Well, let's, one of them ask you a question, and you can respond to it.
I, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
May I hear from some of the people that were on the committee? Is that, I mean, is that okay? Can I?
I think so.
I don't...
Let's...
I'm kind of asking, I guess Keith also about the, the rules here, because there wasn't really a questions from the council on here, and so technically, are we still in interested persons?
No, we're in questions from the council.
I think we added the questions from the council, so if you have a question to the public, I think you can ask it.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm...
I already said that, but go ahead, ask it.
Yeah. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. So...
We have a agreement here.
Would anyone that was on the committee like to say a few minutes of, of like, chime in on anything that we've kind of asked already, that may be good information for us to have as we make this decision? At the microphone, sorry. At the microphone. Sorry. That's so everyone can hear.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, Alan Meyer, 2764 East Pine Street. I just wanted to make clear that RDS voted against the smoking ordinance, the 20 feet, and especially the fact that it, it went beyond the downtown, because our focus is downtown. So, there were, there were a few folks that voted against it. There was also a unanimous vote for the city to provide an option to Mick and Moms. So, everyone on the committee voted unanimously for the city to provide that option, and I, I just didn't think it would turn into a big expenditure for Mick and Moms. I kind of thought that we would find a reasonable solution to help them out. So, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right. Ask other questions of, go ahead.
I think Carrie, do you mind going to the, just, I know you're up and down, but it's for the, the recording and everyone being able to hear you. Thank you, Carrie.
Carrie Sessoms, 1501 East Burnett, Cover Bridge Cafe. So, when we wrote that, we were all sort of under the impression that the patrons of Mick and Moms would have the availability to go out back and smoke. So, I really feel like that was our thinking behind that 20 feet, was just to try to keep the boundary from off the front of the street, because not only does it affect the ballet, but Roxy has some issues with the smoking out there. Okay, well, that's across the street, so we're on one side, so I'm just trying to, but, and so, when we wrote that, we really thought that they would be able to go out back. And so, I was hearing her say that, that they couldn't do that, because it's city property. So, I feel like that, you guys need to think about that, and because it, bottom line, right or wrong, it will affect her business, absolutely. And so, I don't think it's a moral issue or a value issue, you know, like that. I just think that we need to keep the ordinances... issue or value issue, you know, like that, I just think that we need to keep the ordinances so that it keeps our businesses good. And it's a bar, I mean, that'd be like you saying I couldn't sell eggs on Third Street, I'd be eggless. And so, I hope that you just think of that, so that, you know, if there's some resolution that we can come to, we don't have to decide it tonight, it's not, I'm sure that the review committee, with your recommendations, we could go back to the table to make that happen. I know that I would be willing, I'm sure some of the other people that were on there would, except for maybe Brian Quigley, would be willing to do that, because we really want to make it good for everybody.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Carrie. Another question for an audience member, so we can.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I do have another question. If someone could maybe inform us a little bit about this agreement that was made for McKen Moms, something about a trailer, it's a little hazy for me here, what that all means?
Well, we'll say that question was directed.
Are people sitting in a trailer, smoking?
Okay, that question was directed at Samantha, who spoke of it earlier, so let's get her back up there, and there she is.
In meeting with Keith and with Dan, there's a tiny loophole. McKen Moms can purchase a trailer, so that it's a licensed, registered vehicle, and the city will have no liability whatsoever, because they don't want to lease us a spot, or give us an awning, or any other solution. Yeah, we'll have to get a trailer, and then every 30 days, we'll have to tow it out of there to go get it pressure washed, because it's gonna be yuck. But even though that's a resolution, let me tell you, at nighttime, in a back parking lot, it would be unlocked when we open, locked when we close, but it's really not the best situation. It's the only situation that we could come up with, and Dan researched the ordinances, and so, there's no time limit, and no business being conducted in it, so, we can feasibly do that, but he's gonna have to go spend three or four grand to get a trailer, just to be able to do something people have been able to do forever.
Thank you.
Sam, could I help, I want to clarify one little thing.
Sure.
The awning issue, the reason not to put an awning in the back there, is that there's traffic through there, it's a traffic alley.
Sure, but the plans we submitted, the awning would come out no further than where the garbage cans already are.
Oh, okay.
So, it wouldn't impede or obstruct traffic in any way, shape, or form.
Okay, so, maybe that's an issue that can still be looked at, maybe?
Yeah, it's a dead horse.
Oh, okay, all right.
You got too many ordinances prohibiting it.
Okay, all right. Thank you for now.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, Dan. I would like to address the no receptacles, because I had, let me find that again, no ashtrays or cigarette butt container shall be placed on the sidewalk within 20 feet of a doorway. I'm of the same opinion that, you know, we're gonna have an issue of enforcement if we pass this, and people are gonna throw their trash on the ground, it's gonna happen, so, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with that, I don't really know where I'm going with that. But, so how do we deal with that, Dan, if we don't? So, okay, actually, yes, I do have a question. So, if our, if by making 20 feet for the no smoking, and that creates, basically covers the whole Third Street area, then what we're saying is there's gonna be no receptacles at all on Third Street? Or the possibility if?
That's correct.
Somebody won them. Okay.
That's correct.
So, there would be no possibility of having them at all?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clarification, thank you.
So, to answer the question you didn't finish?
Yes.
One way to address that is to modify the ordinance before adoption.
Fair enough.
Chris?
Well, I would just, I would just say, in listening to the earlier commentary, that people are gonna be smoking when they're getting out of the car, gonna be looking for a place to flick it, there's no ashtray there, it's not just a trash concern, now you got cigarette butts all over downtown Main Street.
Fire hazard.
That's got my, you know, attention, so, I think there's probably.
Okay, we're still under, we're still under questions from the council, does someone, would someone like to direct a question to someone in the audience that wants to talk? If that's what's going on, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, Dan, can you talk about what the ordinance is that Sam is speaking of, that prohibits the cover in the back that would not extend past the trash cans? Could you go over that, and why we can't do that?
McKen Moms, the back door of McKen Moms exits into the public alley. To do anything that extends in, over, or under the public alley requires an encroachment permit from the Public Works Department. I don't know whether they actually filed an application for such a permit, or merely had discussions with the Public Works Department, but the Public Works Department indicated that, either the Public Works Department denied the permit request based upon the potential impact on traffic, or indicated that they would do so if an application was submitted.
All right, Mr. Mayor, follow-on question, Lance, can you speak to any of that?
Vaguely. I recall somebody posing the verbal question to whether or not we would look at that. Before rumors went out of business, the property owner came in and asked the same question to us, permanent encroachment into a city right-of-way. The police chief, myself, we met with them, we denied that, because it would impose safety issues into, onto that business, as well as potential liability for the city. I informed, I believe, my engineer that this circumstance would be no different from rumors. I didn't look at it as a smoking issue at all, I looked at it as a safety issue, encroaching upon a public right-of-way. The distance encroaching upon that public right-of-way was not really explained to me, four feet, six feet, but when you have a 16-foot alley, most trucks or most cars were anywhere from eight to 10 feet, or nine feet wide, you got a bar there, it just seems to me that there's a potential safety issue with that. I'm not sure, and I personally, at that point in time, just said we can't do it, because we have precedent across the street with rumors.
Gotcha. All right, very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I have a sort of follow-up question for that. First off, my question is a few parts, is it actually a safety issue for that alleyway, even though there's a garbage can that extends out already? And I'm wondering about if there's any way that they could have some type of encroachment permit for a small fenced area right outside their back door?
That's the door. It's right outside the door, then?
Yeah, yes, but if there's a garbage can that's already extending out into the alleyway, clearly there's some type of permit that was allowed for that to happen, I would hope. And so, if there was some type of fenced enclosure that doesn't extend past that garbage can, is it really impeding the alleyway anymore? I'm just, these are just ideas, I don't know if they're good ideas, point of discussion and curiosity.
I don't think there is a permit for that garbage can. I couldn't tell you how many times it's been hit, because I don't hang out out there, I don't know how many dents are in it, all I know is it would only take one person to get hit, and guess who's gonna get called upon that? City, State. So, but again, it's, my first thought was, we denied rumors for that exact reason, there's no real difference.
Would someone like to direct a question to Mr. Rumor, oh, Mr. Cronquist here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, he'd like to speak, but.
I have one follow-up question for the city, first off, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we practice that just because that's something that we've always done, that we'll always do it, or that, do we always think that we've made every right decision when we make decisions, or can we go back and correct things? That's kind of my broad question, when I hear that we've had like a precedent, does that actually mean that what we did before was the right decision? Or can we reconsider things and move forward? I just, I grimace a little bit when I hear, that's what we did before. We've had a lot of decisions that have come to our council, that they were decisions made before, and now we're having to correct them, and they're not fun.
You're needing a response?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Campbell?
I think to Lance's point, what the issue they talked about was a concern of a public safety issue, and I understand, I mean, we could look at it in a more detailed analysis, but when you have trash cans there, that's not necessarily gonna be a guidepost, because what happens when the trash cans are gone?
Right.
Are not there, right? So, that becomes the issue. I know we have talked to the city attorney about several of these things, and also some of the guideposts, it's going back to liability for the city, and the concern you have in anything like that is, it sounds fine now, but what happens when someone hits it, and as Lance has said, it comes right back to the city.
Yeah, no, I hear that, my specific question was about.
So, that would be, that would be the concern of, if the alleyway is the full alleyway to the door, which it is, that's the 16 feet, I understand there's an obstacle now, but when the obstacle's gone, that means, you know, that it can be hit, and that's what the concern that we've had expressed in talking about these issues in terms of liability for the city.
Okay, there's one. Would someone like to ask a question of Mr. Case, we can get his comment?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask Mark Cronquist, his opinion.
I don't have an opinion, but thank you. I recall, and Lance can help me out here, because the chief has changed, and I welcome our new chief, we and the council, and I was on council when the discussion came up with rumors, I believe the solution was that rumors bought a permit to close off and fence off the alleyway, and allow that to be smoking. I don't know, I don't smoke, I very seldom went to rumors, and seldom go to McKen Moms, but I believe that that was the workaround that was both legal and practical, I don't know, maybe Lance or Dan knows.
I can address that, that was a temporary permit, that was, that what they paid for every time that they did it, it was good for a weekend-type event, so, it would be a solution if they wanted to pay for the permit, and to do the proper, and to close it down. There were quite a few complaints we received about rumors, alleyway being closed, but it is still, it's a permitted event, that's only for a weekend, and it's limited in the amount of time they can do it.
And also, the distinction was, the owners of the rumors property owned the property on the other side of the alley, and made provision for access through their private properties, that the alley could still continue to function, when they closed the alley.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. They did own the property adjacent to their building. We suggested that they put the no smoking barrier over there, opposite our 16-foot alley. They came back and said, we're a bar, people drink, the last thing we want to do is have a car hit us while we're walking across the street. That's what was told to us at that time. I'll just leave it at that.
Is there anything else? Go ahead.
It just seems like there's some unfinished business, I mean, we've gone through this iteration a couple of times with the committee. I have, we have businesses out there supporting some kind of resolution for McKen Moms, we want to be a business-friendly committee, we want to be a business-friendly government. It seems to me that, not that we're in the making decisions point, but maybe to kick this out again to maybe September, get the committee back together again, and see if there's a resolution for McKen Moms, and also to look at the ashtray situation, and whether or not that's necessary, the, having those.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question about whether we can approve portions of it, and then maybe revisit the smoking portion of it in a committee setting, I don't know if we have to do it all, or if we can just approve, get some of these things in action, because it's been a really long time that people have been working on this, and I know that the review committee worked really hard on some of these other, well, on all of these points, but some of these other ones, there doesn't seem to be any real deliberation, or?
Agreed.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's, is that a possibility, can we do that, Dan?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
I'll, I'll say more at the appropriate time.
Okay, so, are we ready to close the hearing and go to council deliberation?
Do we get the final staff report?
Yeah, we'll get a final staff report in there, yeah. When do you want to do that, Dan, after I close the hearing? Okay, you guys ready?
If we close it now, are we able to then bring it back?
And what would we bring it back for?
Well, because there was an intention of bringing it back, there was a stated intention of bringing it back, so I'm just asking if we should close the hearing?
Well, we can continue the hearing, too, that's an option, yeah. And that may be the way this is going, but we'll see. All right, we're not gonna close the hearing, I don't think I have to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I have another question for the staff, just because we're now confused about whether we can close the hearing or not. We can approve it with modifications, and then this could come back as like a separate ordinance if need be for the smoking portion of it? Like, we just want to make sure we don't close it, and then go, wow, we should have kept that open. Dan?
As the mayor stated in his opening statement, this is not a land use public hearing.
So, we can close?
This is just legislative business of the council, there is no statutory requirement, there is no requirement in our city charter, and there is no requirement in our code that you hold the hearing that you held this evening. You could have, and you still may, adopt changes to the municipal code other than the land use code without a public hearing. Not that I'm advocating that you do so, but there is no limitation on your actions. So, among the options that you have tonight are either to adopt the ordinance as presented, to adopt it as, with modifications, to not adopt any changes, and I would suggest that if you choose to not make any changes in the code, perhaps it is time to reinstate enforcement of ordinance 1019 that was suspended by the council last September. And whatever modifications you make to the code are your policy choices, to take things out, to add things in, to take things out and ask staff, or direct staff, to modify them and bring them back to you in a subsequent ordinance? Or should you wish to conduct further public process, to ask the committee to come together to hash things out again? That's all within your purview, there are few rules of the road that you need to follow, because this is not a land use hearing where your actions are quite prescribed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a follow-up on that, so, I just want to be clear, if we would like to, if our, if one of the options?
If we would like to, if our, if one of the options is to send this back, do we keep the public hearing open or do we close it now? And then when it's brought back to us, we have the opportunity to have the other, to have another public hearing?
There is no, there is no need to keep the public hearing open. Because there is no, because you can choose to hold a different public here, another public hearing at some other time. Or you can choose to not hold a public hearing because there is no requirement for you to hold a public hearing.
That was the clarification. Thank you, Dan.
So let's close the public hearing and go to some deliberation. Hearing's closed.
All right.
Council deliberation.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
You know, the way I see this is it sounds like the smoking thing is still going to be an issue, and we can go ahead and make a committee or a task force on that to kind of figure out what we want to do, but for now, there are pieces of this ordinance that it sounds like need to be moved forward. So it would be my view that we should go ahead and close the hearing and approve first consideration of Ordinance 1036 with the modification that we strike Section 1 that deals with the smoking until we can come back with a different ordinance that deals with that specifically, maybe after some review committee or something of that nature. That's my suggestion.
If someone, if someone were to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm making that motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't know how I'm going to be able to repeat that. Have you have that written down?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the hearing and approve the ordinance with the modification that we strike Section 1.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Point of order.
Yes.
We're in deliberation.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah. We're not in council decision. We're in council deliberation, point of order.
I thought I said I would second that.
Let's go with deliberation. Come on. Deliberate away.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So to me, it's important to have good policy. I see a lot of this, these recommendations as excellent policy. I see Section 1 as still needing some work, and I think that we all, it sounds like a lot of us agree with that. You never want to try to make a horse and come out with a camel. So for me, I feel like we could move forward with most of the ordinance with just removing Section 1 at this point and then have the review committee for 1019. If they would like to reform, we can ask them to reform and make those changes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If someone were to make that motion, I would second it.
When we get to council...
Mr. Mayor, can we move to council decision?
Okay, you ready for a council decision?
Are you calling for the question?
I am calling for the question.
Any other deliberation before we go to a decision? Council decision on Ordinance 1036. What would you folks like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the ordinance 136 with the modification that we strike Section 1 until a committee can be formed to discuss some sort of constructive solution to this issue.
I would second that motion.
So approve the ordinance with modifications, striking Section 1, and what else, please?
Oh, that was the only part I'm striking.
Okay.
And the committee.
And there's also the committee, yes.
And what?
There will also be a committee formed to discuss Section 1 and find a constructive solution down the road in the future.
Okay, you've got to have a committee. That's important. Okay, motion and a second, right? Chris, you seconded it?
I did.
You did?
Twice.
Any other deliberation on this? Anything on the question? Alyssa, call the council on this, please.
Sure. Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Four to zero, okay. All right, good. Moving right along. General business, economic development strategic project, strategies project. Thank you. Staff report. Mr. Fleischman?
Council, the issue before you is the consideration of the economic development strategy and action plan for adoption. These documents were presented to you at July 1, and at that time, you delayed action on the plan until this evening. This is a project that the city started back in November. We put together a number of advisory committees and industry representative committees. We had a number of public meetings. The strategy and action plan lays out a course of action for the city to undertake to promote economic development in the city, and staff recommends that you adopt the strategy and action plan that is before you. I know there was concern raised at your July meeting regarding the commitment of hiring additional staff for the city. I do want to point out that the plan, the action plan does call for a new position to serve as a development coordinator. The city council, when they were working on their 2019, 2023 city council goals, included a short-term goal of developing economic development strategies. There was discussion at that time of designating a person as responsible for economic development within city staff. And just like all of the other plans that the city council has adopted that call for certain actions, it will be up to either this council or future councils to implement them as your resources and priorities allow when the time comes to create future budgets. So by adopting a plan that says in the future, we should add another staff person, doesn't mean that staff person is coming. It lays out a course of action for staff and for the council to consider as you prepare future budgets and future budget years. With that, staff recommends adoption as presented. And I'll answer any questions that you have on the plan, the action matrix, or their contents.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
Can you just give like a 30-second, what's the position, the role of that position, what that position would be doing? I was there, I know. I just, I think it's...
Yes, yeah.